Mr. Wood, would you like to do the implication?
Sure. That with me, please. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, for the sunshine that we have, and the warmth of God on our backs, Father. We just thank you for the way that you always help us and keep us safe, Father. As we go through these trying times with the oil price and with the virus, Father, we just ask you, you will bless each one of those that are involved in those situations, that are involved with the jobs. Father, this is stressful times for this nation, and also for the county, Father. We ask that you will keep all of our employees, and all of our EMS people, and all of the police, first responders, Father. We just ask you to keep all of them safe. And, Father, for those that have lost loved ones during this virus, we pray that you will bless them in a special way. And, Father, we just thank you so much for your grace and your mercy. And, Father, as we go through this meeting today, we ask that you will guide us and give us wisdom as we make decisions that affect each one of us and the citizens of this county. All these things, we ask in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Good, amen. Public comments, do we have any public comments?
Chairman Carlson, we have three public comments, but they're really more pertinent to the special meeting tomorrow afternoon, so we'll read them tomorrow afternoon at that meeting.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good. Okay. Service Awards, since we can't be there to give them out, I would like to read them, though. We have Rhonda Hatch with the Assessor's Office, fifteen years. We have Judy Jensen, the Clerk's Office, fifteen years. We have Kathy Walters, Public Works, Artesia, ten years. We will have Anthony Ponce, detention, ten years. I'd like to thank all these individuals for their service and commitment to the County of Eddy. Thank you. Okay, bid awards.
Commissioner Carlson, can, can we verify the commissioners on the line, please, just so we know we have the required amount?
Okay. I'm on the line, Commissioner Carlson.
Commissioner Crockett, I'm on the line.
Larry Wood, Mister Three, on the line. On line. Sean Henry, District Two.
Even McCutcheon, District Four.
Okay, we have all the commissioners online. Okay, Roberta, would you like to present the proposal for the audit services?
Yes, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So, we did a solicitation, RFP twenty oh two, for annual audits here in the Finance Department. We solicited this RFP on March sixteenth. We did receive three proposals. Those three proposals were Carr Riggs and Ingram, Beasley Mitchell and Company, and Johnson Miller and Company. We did have the evaluators evaluate, and they were deemed responsive and qualified and acceptable, so we are making a recommendation toward RFP twenty oh two to Carr Riggs and Ingram for annual audit services.
I see the picture of a phone.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
Now, Mister Carlson.
Can you put your hand on your phone?
Yeah, I did.
Hello, do we have any questions?
Mister Chairman, this is Commissioner Crockett. I'd like to make a motion that we approve RFP twenty dash zero two, annual audit services.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Deal. I mean, Robin just told me you had to do minutes. Anyway.
Was gonna do the minutes under the trailing agenda?
Yes. And that's like, delayed a couple minutes.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, you want me to call the vote?
Yes.
Could you guys hear me?
Hello?
Mister Carlson, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, Wood? Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay. We have another RFP with Roberto Smith on the oil and gas property tax audit.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So, that was fun, let's try that one again. So, we have another RFP twenty oh three, oil and gas personal property audit. We did solicit this back in March eleven, twenty twenty. We only received one proposal, which was Total Assessment Solutions Corporation. We did have our evaluation team evaluate this, and it was deemed responsive, so we are making the recommendation to award RFP twenty oh three to Total Assessment Solution Corporation, also known as TASK.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
This is Commissioner Henry, I do have discussions.
Okay.
Go ahead, or are we waiting for everyone?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I've got a couple of quick questions. I know this is a continuation of oil and gas audit. I've had a lot of discussion on this, well, since before I was on the board, since I've been on the board, and I still have some. I know, and I'm gonna reference a letter that was sent December first of twenty seventeen, and in the letter, the Taxation Revenue Department, basically in their second paragraph of the letter, if there's any question that Taxation Revenue Department is solely responsible for valuing centrally assessed property, it is definitively answered by the New Mexico Court of Appeals in the recent decision of Cable One Inc. versus New Mexico Department of Taxation and Rev. dated October thirtieth of twenty seventeen. So, what has changed to make us think that now we have any kind of responsibility to do this? Because according to this letter, it is solely the responsibility of Taxation Revenue Department and no one else.
Roberta, do we have an answer to that?
Commissioner Henry, I'm not sure if I could completely answer your question. On our side, when a department head elected official reaches out to do an RFP for procurement of services or a product, we essentially follow their lead, and as long as they're not obviously wanting to purchase anything illegal or misuse of funds in doing that, we follow their lead, and that's the service that we provide to our elected official and department head. We don't really get into details as to if they should be providing the service or the product itself, so.
Can, can we get a legal, can we get a legal comment on that task?
You know, Chairman, I, I think if Jim is on the phone, maybe she can, can add some insight into, you know, why we continue to need these services, and Commissioner Henry has questioned this in the past. You know, these don't come out of general fund money, they do come out of taxpayer money that's in the, her special one percent money funds. And those funds are expended pursuant to a specific statute that, that deals with those monies, and it says the expenditures from this fund will be made pursuant to a property valuation program presented by the assessor that's approved by the majority of the county commissioners. And, you know, Jim may need to answer why TASK is still needed to accomplish these services when we did get that letter, there's no denying we got that letter from the state indicating that they're responsible. Now, whether they're able to handle it, and whether there are other items that they don't take care of in their valuation, Jim would need to answer that, I think, if Jim is on the phone.
Okay. I think one of the questions that, that Commissioner Henry had that I, that I gleaned from that was, who is constitutionally responsible to do that assessment? Is that the county, or is that the Taxation and Revenue, which, you know, I know that there was a court case on this, but, but the court case ruled that we are to give the resources to the, to the elected officials to perform their duties. But does that mean that, that we are, are constitutionally responsible, or is that the state of New Mexico's taxation revenue that's responsible? And if so, and if so, should we look for taxation revenue to reimburse us for the cost of this?
If I may, Commissioner Carlson, can y'all hear me better?
Yes.
A little bit.
Okay. In the first paragraph of this letter, it says, "By this letter," and this is from, this is Taxation and Revenue saying this, "By this letter, I am informing you that neither the statute nor the order," and this is talking about the very court case you just talked about, and in that court case, they said that the county commission could allow it. It did not say they had to allow it, it could allow it to spend these monies. But, this says, "I am informing you that neither the state statute nor the order invested you with such authority. The Taxation and Revenue Department is vested with the sole responsibility of valuing this property." So, that's the first paragraph of the letter sent from Taxation and Rev.
Should we get, should we get clarification from the Attorney General's office before we pursue, go forward with this?
I would say, if nothing else, I would, if, if there's no further discussion, I would rather make a motion to table it until yet further.
I don't know that the Attorney General's gonna assist in a decision. The court, the court case centered around whether or not she could actually, the county assessor at that time could contract with somebody else to assist her with the valuation of properties. And that's what went up on appeal, and they, it was determined, because there was an old case that said, the county assessor is an elected official, you can't hire, you cannot hire independent contractors to do your job. It was an old case, and the Supreme Court said, "That case is an old case, and yes, she can hire that, but it's subject to approval of the county commission because it's under this particular seven thirty eight, thirty eight point one, that, that it's subject to the majority of the county commissioners' approval." And I understand that, that Jim may want TASK to, to provide these services, and i- if she's on the phone, she needs, I, I think she would need to tell the commission what, in fact, TASK does that the state doesn't do that assists her in, in that regard.
But, here's the question, do, do we even have the, the requirement to do that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
May I, can I say something, please?
Yes.
The state doesn't do field inspections, that's why we ended up doing this all along. What we're doing, TASK does do the field inspection and give that data to the state. We're not just keeping it internally, we are sharing with them. We are supposed to, you know, by law, we're supposed to discover it. This is our number one thing that we're supposed to do. But, it's not just, I mean, they don't just find, I don't know, pipelines anymore, they're, they're look, they find a lot of other equipment, like generators and saltwater disposals and things like that. It's not as limited as it was in the very, very first year. And I do believe that we have the, we've gone to the Supreme Court over just before. I don't think that this is any different than what we were doing before that we went to the Supreme Court for. We're using one percent monies, it does not affect the general fund. And I don't, I think this is kind of a, I'm not trying to kick it in the board because I know the industry is in very dire straits right now, but that is not close to what tomorrow will bring. You know, in January, it was phenomenal, and another, another three months, it'll be phenomenal out there again, so we can't look at it in a, in a very closed manner. Thank you. And we also say that we, TASK knows the dollar figure on this also. TASK helped us just the other day, we're, we're working with TASK to settle two cases right now that'll be over a hundred thousand dollars in, in additional income. Thank you.
Um, this is.
Okay, anybody have, anything they wanna add?
Yeah, this, this is Commissioner.
I would, I, I.
Go ahead, John.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I, I'm, you know, I understand there may be a, a need for that service to take place, but the way I'm understanding the letter and the discussion is that it's not our responsibility to provide that, and I don't wanna get into the business of providing something for the state just because they are incapable of providing it, and then we have to incur the cost. Am I reading the discussion correctly?
Commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right now, the state is severely understaffed, as usual. They do not have the people to go out there and do that. They love the fact that we're doing it, because we are giving our information that we find to them. They don't have the staff, they don't have, they never have, and they never will. People don't like to fund that department. We used to have our, the department head was wonderful, she was, she was working really well with us, and then she quit and went to a different department. So, we really don't even have anybody, as we state right now, leading PTB. But they, but they appreciate, I mean, TASK has been working with the state for several years now. And I don't think it's our respons, it is our responsibility to be out there and finding any kind of valuation in the county. Both of it is not, well, I shouldn't say both, some of it is a, is a central assess, and that's what that letter was talking about, was central assess. But we've gone, like I said, we've gone to the Supreme Court, it is the, I can do it, I'll fight for it, thank you.
Okay, you started to say something, Commissioner Wood. Yes.
This is Commissioner Henry, not Wood, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go further in this letter where it says, "Further, Judge Singleton's order is, is of no presidential value in Eddy County, and does not give you explicit or direct authority to assess the property at issue. The department has the sole authority to value all property that is subject to prescribed special method evaluation. The property you wish to value is subject to prescribed special method, and therefore subject to valuation exclusively by the department. The department's authority and responsibility to value centrally assessed property, both uniformity and certainty, conditions that have helped develop a thriving business sector." I think until I see something different from Taxation and Rev., I cannot support this because they're saying it's their sole responsibility. I know that we're helping them, but again, I've said it from the get-go, this feels like an unfunded mandate that we placed on ourselves, and we spent well over a million dollars on this assessment, and I've never heard, last I heard, we weren't even close to paying that back. So, I have a hard time with this. I would still, when I make a motion, I'd like to make the motion.
Well, I think first thing I'd like to do is hear from Commissioner Wood, he started to say something earlier.
No, I didn't try to say anything.
Okay.
I, you know, I've been in support of, of, of Jim and doing, and doing this audit for a long time, and, you know, when the Supreme Court says you can do it, use the one percent money, then I, you know, I feel like she's doing the right thing.
Okay. Commissioner Crockett, do you have any comment?
No, I, I concur with what Larry Wood said. We started this, and we agreed to do this with Jim, and I think that it does kind of feel like an unfunded mandate, but the state does not have the people to do this audit, and we're required to do it, so that's why.
Yeah, if they, do we, if no further questions, do we have a motion of any type?
Commissioner Carlson, this is Commissioner Henry, I'll make a motion. I move to table, and the RFP, is this RFP that's up here now? RFP number twenty dash oh three, oil and gas personal property audit. I move we table the audit until we can get further clarification from Taxation and Revenue, that we have the authority to do so.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, this is second. I'm the, yeah, however, I'm supposed to say it. Commissioner McCutcheon makes the second, there we go, for the record.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Wood?
No.
Crockett?
No.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
We have that, and now we move on to the annual report from the assessor. Jim?
Sorry, I was getting unmuted. Um, I have already issued, given all of you a copy of this report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
I don't have any, Mister Chairman.
Okay.
I have none.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hood, I mean, Woods?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, we're gonna move to the trailing agenda, and for approval, commission meeting minutes for March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Is there any, is there any discussion? Any changes that need to be made? Can I get a motion to accept then?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the March seventeenth commission meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second. Commissioner McCutcheon.
When you, when you do your second, if you would give us your name, and then, because sometimes it's, it's mumbled whenever I get it on the, on the online.
Larry Wood, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Special commission meeting minutes for March thirty first, twenty twenty. Do we have any discussion or changes that need to be made? If not, I would call for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special commission meeting minutes for March thirty first, twenty twenty. This was Commissioner McCutcheon.
Do I have a second?
Susan Crockett, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, purchase card approval list for February twenty twenty. Do we have any items that need to be questioned? If not, can I get a motion and a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, I make a motion that we approve the purchase card approval list for February twenty twenty.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Henry, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Wood, I mean, Henry.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, purchase card approval, uh, card approval list for March twenty twenty. Is there any items that need to be questioned and pulled? If not, I would like to see a motion and a second.
Mister Chairman, this is Commissioner Crockett, I make a motion that we approve the purchase card approval list for March two thousand and twenty.
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, expense approval report for March twenty twenty. Do we have any items that need to be pulled or questioned? Okay, I would like to see a motion and a second then.
Mister Wood, I'll make a motion, uh, expense card approval list?
Yes. Expense approval report.
Expense approval report.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Crockett.
This is Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, creatures report for February twenty twenty, Lori Pruitt.
You need some more ice.
Is Lori on?
I, I think, Commissioner Carlson, I think it's information only, it's the, the standard report for the business transactions for the county, the finances.
Okay, moving on then. Uh, March twenty twenty revenue report, Roberta Smith.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, for the March twenty twenty revenue report, for gross receipts tax, the county received one point six million dollars in the month of March. We're currently budgeted at thirteen point eight million dollars for GRT, for general fund, and we've collected roughly fifteen point one million. For oil and gas, for oil and gas production for the month of March, we collected a little over three million dollars. And again, this was probably one of our better months, this was, obviously, this was the business month of January where price per barrel was about sixty dollars per barrel. So, we did collect a little over three million. We also had about thirteen million barrels that month. Uh, for equipment, oil and gas equipment, obviously, we only collected about a hundred and eighty-six dollars, which brought our total to four point eight million dollars for equipment. And for oil and gas royalties for the month of March, we collected a little, little over six hundred dollars. So, overall, that's still a little over three million dollars for the month of March for oil and gas production and equipment.
Okay, where are we sitting at in oil and gas over, for the year so far?
Overall, for the year, um, total, we've, um, we're budgeted at twenty million, and we've collected twenty seven point five million so far.
Okay.
So, a little over seven million dollars.
Okay. Can I, is there any questions or comments from the? Okay, can I, is there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Crockett?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No.
Commissioner Woods?
Hello?
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the March twenty twenty revenue report. Commissioner McCutcheon?
I get a second.
Commissioner Henry, second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
You, yes, sorry.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Budget versus actual, February twenty twenty, Roberta Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our February budget versus actual, obviously, we should be around sixty-seven percent for the fiscal year. For countywide revenue, as of February, we collected about a hundred and ten million dollars out of our hundred and eighteen million dollars, which puts us at about ninety-three percent collected overall. And on our expense side, uh, we have not even expensed half of our expenses countywide. We're about sixty-eight million, expense over a hundred and thirty-nine million overall. For our general funds, we've collected about ninety-seven percent of our overall budgeted amount for general funds. We're sitting at about almost fifty-four million dollars collected in revenue. For general fund expenses, we're right at that sixty-seven percent mark. Uh, we've spent about forty-nine million dollars out of our seventy-three million dollar general fund budget. And as you can see, most of the departments in general funds are under that sixty-seven percent. Uh, the commissioners are a little bit over at sixty-nine percent, and the only reason for that is because out of that one point two million dollar budget for commission, about five hundred thousand of it is GRT admin fee, which I know I've explained this in the past, it's basically washed out on the revenue side, but we do have to realize that expense, so that is why the commissioners are a little bit over. Um, again, the treasurer's office is just slightly over on the administration, and that, again, that's only because the majority of those expenses are payroll expenses, and we're a little bit ahead of the game on the payroll. Um, we're about seventy-six to eighty percent on payroll. So, um, all the other departments are still in line and under the sixty-seven percent. For the road funds, we've collected about eighty-three percent of our revenue, and we've only expensed about thirty-one percent of expenses. Um, I know Jason's ramping up on his expenses. He's submitted quite a bit of purchase orders here recently, so he's getting ready to do quite a bit of work now for the spring. So I think we'll see that, that number change in these next couple of months.
Okay, thank you, Roberta. Uh, Commissioner Crockett, do you have any questions or discussion?
No.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the adj, versus actual for February twenty twenty. This is Commissioner Crockett.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second. Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Fiscal year in, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, third quarter lodgers tax report. Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the third quarter lodgers tax report, um, again, our beginning cash balance for this fiscal year was two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. At the end of March, it was slightly over that, two hundred and forty-six thousand. Uh, for the quarter, we collected twenty-seven thousand dollars in, and overall, for the fiscal year, we've collected almost seventy-nine thousand dollars in revenue. On the expense side, this third quarter, we actually made some expenses this year, this quarter. Uh, we spent almost sixty thousand dollars in expenses, um, and that was just over tourist-related events, uh, uh, operating expenses for some plaques and, uh, it looks like some contracts with Albuquerque Special Editions.
Okay. Uh, questions, Commissioner Crockett?
Um, I don't have any, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner, uh, Henry. I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, third quarter lodgers tax report.
Okay, can I get a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, we have, next, moving on the agenda. G two zero S N zero zero one seven A, grant award agreement, Region Six Drug Task Force Administration, and E V D F T F D T F, William Robert Sullivan.
Yeah, good morning. Good morning. Uh, the way this grant works, uh, just as a review for you, um, Lee County is the one that is the actual grantee for all of Region Six, which covers the five counties in southeast of Mexico. Uh, and then Eddie County, of course, takes care of the Vegas Valley Task Force as well as the, uh, Region Six Act. Um, the, uh, budget, uh, through by HIDA and before you today is a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifteen for admin and three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four ninety-eight for Vegas Valley Task Force. Because of the, uh, uh, federal uniform guidance, um, regarding, as the way they have the grant, like I said, Lee County is the grantee and then they have to, to, uh, do a subaward in order for this money to come to, to Eddie County. And so what I'm asking for is for approval of that subaward of for both, uh, Region Six Act and, and, uh, Vegas Valley.
Okay, uh, questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion to, to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I, this is Larry Wood. I'd like to make a motion to approve G two zero S N zero zero one seven A and brand of, Region Six Drug Task Force Administration, Vegas Valley, DTF.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Crockett, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number seven. HIDA Grant Modification Fiscal Year Twenty Nineteen, Lemon Layoffs.
Good morning, everybody. Um, along with that, my base fund funding for the Vegas Drug Task Force, we would request, uh, we did a request for supplemental funding in the amount of, um, thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is, uh, additional money to our baseline funding, and, uh, about ten thousand dollars of that will be for a new server. Um, ours is over five years old and we have an issue, so it needs to be upgraded. And then the other operating supplies are just upgrade some, uh, surveillance cameras that we have.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Crockett.
Okay, do I have a second?
Uh, Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Moving on. Approval to solicit request for bids for key watcher touch system, Warden Billy Massengill.
Good morning, team. Uh, what we're requesting for here is, um, similar key watcher, um, device that we have for our keys. This would actually be upfront, uh, allow staff to put, uh, pigeon, like pigeon hole boxes where staff can put their, uh, their keys, their wallets, uh, and some of their cell phones, uh, those devices upfront. Uh, it's biometric, will feed in with our current existing, uh, uh, software, current existing, uh, platform. Uh, so this, just keep it upfront and this will be able to have the ability for those people to put their stuff away and make sure it's secure.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
This is only gonna require a budget adjustment within detention, correct? Okay.
Correct, sir. We're, uh, pulling out of our, our probably salary savings is worth coming to come out of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Can I have a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner Crockett. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, can I have a motion, or a, a second for the motion?
Commissioner Wood, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion number nine, or item nine, approval to purchase a Vulcan series gas range, uh, Warden Massengill.
Yes, sir, again, this will come out of the, uh, the detention budget itself. It's, uh, uh, we have a Vulcan, uh, oven. Pretty much use its life expectancy. Some we're having problems with the oven portion of it, but the top portion works, uh, probably at the point now that we just wanna go ahead and change it out.
Okay, uh, questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion?
Uh, Mr.?
This is Commissioner Wood. I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of Vulcan series gas range.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Call for a vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett? Fisher Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item ten. Approval to contract with Donner Plumbing and GE Inc. for water heater system installation at the EC DC Alpha Unit, uh, Warden Massengill.
Yes, and let's, uh, Brian will like this, going back to the, uh, oven, we'll have a, uh, full person will be able to contract and install that, so we won't have to, uh, worry about that part of it. Going to this agenda portion here, and, and Brian can contest to it, uh, you'd almost have to look at the infrastructure of how the water, uh, hot water supply goes into the Alpha Pod. The hot water heater literally is on top of a room in the gym. I, I, I would have believed, Donner wasn't here. They literally, when they cubed these together, uh, uh, when they built the gym, it's like they almost put the hot water heater in after, uh, they laid the wall. Or they either put the, the hot water heater in and then put a wall up that you cannot service it, you cannot change it out, the door's too small. So, what, um, the best solution we believe is, is taking that, getting it on the ground level, um, doing a redundant system, uh, system where we have a second heater behind it just in case. The first one was to fail. And then, again, this is also within the detention budget. Um, get, getting that device from, from, it's not the second tier, but the second level down to the ground level.
Okay.
May I ask you stuff?
Sure.
I, yeah, so, Warden's correct, and in addition to those things, um, we did have that water healer, heater fail, uh, towards the end of last summer. Uh, parts were very hard and very expensive to get, which led us to, um, seek several, uh, contractors' advice, and we felt that this was the best overall solution, turnkey solution. Uh, one thing that, uh, uh, we hope to avoid here as well is this water heater was installed in a manner that is directly above all of the switch gear for that facility. And so if it does have a major rupture, uh, there's a lot more that could go wrong, and so we're trying to avoid that going off into the future, living in that building.
Okay, Commissioner Crockett, any discussions, questions?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Henry?
I wonder if he's dropped out. I'm, I'll try and connect with him.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Susan Crockett, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
You want me to put you on speaker?
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
That's probably not gonna work, Josh.
Can anybody hear Commissioner Henry?
He, he's dropped off the line. He's, he's calling Commissioner McCutcheon.
Yeah, I can hear him.
There, there he is.
All right. Then whatever, I, I think I'm voting, right? Yes.
Yes.
All right, trying to get everything back. Yes.
Okay, moving on to item eleven. Dell host machine for virtual servers, Harold Inington.
Good morning. Um, I've requested today a Dell host machine that holds several...
Harold, you are, you are echoing. There you go.
Okay, there, there. Is that better?
That's a lot better.
Okay, um, what this is, is we originally had three host machines, um, and they're getting old. And so this is the beginning of replacing one of those originals with a new one. Um, we had, we've already got a, uh, purchase in order for the storage that connects, in other words, holds all the data. This holds all the brains of the servers. And we had it in the budget for next year, but Mr. Davis, uh, it's... uh, advised me to go ahead and ask for it now, so we can get it all together in place.
Okay, questions? Uh, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
I'm just hoping that this host machine works, uh, is easier to work than the host we're using on the meeting right now. It's the only thing I'm, I'm really pulling for, so it's a good one.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, do I, I need a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Dell host machine for virtual servers. This is Commissioner Crockett.
Do I have a second?
Larry Wood will second that.
Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, now, item twelve, reclassification of one tracker technical assistant to data entry clerk receptionist, Cindy Cherry.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman and everyone. This is Cindy. We have a vacant position here in the DWI program. It's a part-time position. And that position is responsible for taking data from court records and DWI program records and entering into, into the statewide DWI offender client tracking database. Tracking is the component that, uh, DFA calls it tracking. We actually thought data entry and receptionist duties would be a, better aligned with job responsibilities, uh, versus tracking. Tracking and compliance are something that, uh, the Alternative Sentencing Unit provides. There's no change in, um, the amount of pay for this position, just, uh, better alignment of the job description with the duty.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Larry Wood. I'll make this motion.
Okay.
He doesn't be off data, uh, receptionist part-time.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item thirteen, budget adjustment request, Joshua Mack.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, per the agenda request, if any of the commissioners have any questions, I'll answer them.
Okay, questions? Uh, Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the Sun Country Volunteer, oh, sorry, the budget adjustment request.
Okay, can I give a second?
This is Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item fourteen, Sun Country Volunteer Fire Department Kenworth four thousand gallon tanker, Joshua Mack.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this was the one that we brought to you back in March, and we are gonna move forward with the one truck that was approved by the Fire Board for sixty percent funding, so I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Can I get a motion?
This is Commissioner Henry. I'll make a motion to approve the Sun Country Volunteer Fire Department Kenworth four thousand gallon tanker.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner.
Larry Wood, I'll second that.
Can we call for the vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item fifteen, state fire fund application approval, Joshua Mack.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an annual application that's required by the State Fire Marshal's Office for state fire funds. Roberta and Michelle are actively working on these, and we just need the commission's approval for Mr. Chairman to sign those when they're ready.
Okay, uh, questions? Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner Henry. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve state fire fund application approval.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Crockett, second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Moving to item sixteen, budget reallocation for public works dump truck, Jason Burns.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, this request, uh, what we're requesting is that we, uh, can purchase some dump trucks with already budgeted funds. Um, this is not an increase of the budget, just an approval for us to use already budgeted funds from, uh, the heavy trucks and other assets to, uh, purchase these dump trucks.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hen, uh, Wood?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Call for a, uh, motion? Do I have a mo-
Yeah, this is Commissioner Henry. I'll make a motion to approve the budget reallocation for public works dump truck.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Wood, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item seventeen, budget reallocation for public works tractor and mower, Jason Burns.
Commissioner Carlson, we, we're, we're one ahead on the agenda request. Maybe that's how it's going, but this is the budget adjustment for Twin Wells chip seal, is what I'm seeing. I think, I think our IT may be one ahead. So, we're on, we should be on page.
Yeah, you need to back up one.
Perfect, thank you.
You would come down, come back down one.
There.
There we go. Okay, right there.
Excellent, sorry.
Okay, where was we at? Um, Jason?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're requesting another reallocation here of budgeted funds. Um, we have a, a current mower that went down this year that could be fairly expensive to repair. And, uh, after reviewing our budget with my, uh, managers, we decided that we actually had it in the budget to replace the tractor and all four motor decks. Um, and we're requesting that this, uh, be approved, the purchase of the budget funds.
Okay, do I have any questions? Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No question.
Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, um, to approve the budget reallocation for public works tractor and mowers.
Can I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item eighteen, budget adjustment for Twin Wells chip seal, Jason Burns.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, I've visited with Roberta and coordinated with her on this. We have this in the budget, and we just need your approval, um, to be able to extend these funds. And we're going to go out and finish chip sealing, uh, the pavement that's already on Twin Wells.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Yes, uh, Jason, will this be fenced when you're done, or is this gonna be open range?
Um, it's currently, oh, you would ask that. It's currently fenced right now, or is it? No, it is open range right now. We don't, we're not planning on building any fence, if that answers your question. I can't remember if it's fenced or, um, open range right now, but e- either way, we're not planning on building any fence.
Okay.
This is, this is strictly for road repairs. Uh, we previously went out and paved a section of, uh, from the highway, did about six miles of Twin Wells, and if we don't go put a top, uh, seal, chip seal on top of this, we're gonna lose that pavement that's out there.
So it's not to con-
Okay, any other questions?
It's not to continue on? You're gonna chip seal over what you've currently done?
That's currently the plan, and if we have the, if, if the, if it comes out, we're gonna be able to extend it on. If the price comes out right, we're gonna try to extend it on, but right now it's to save the pavement that's out there.
You're gonna extend it around to Buck Jackson or McDonald, or where's it going to?
That is currently, I mean, we're gonna go towards Buck Jackson if we can, but it's currently the plan, plan just to save the pavement that we've already put out there.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Do I have a motion?
This is Commissioner Henry. I'll make a motion to approve the budget adjustment for Twin Wells chip seal.
Okay, do I have a second?
Larry Wood will second that.
Okay, call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Abstain.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, uh, number nineteen, budget adjustment for Red Camp, Red Campbell Road Engineering, Jason Burns.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, coming to you this morning to request this, um, we, we previously approved a partnership with Lee County to reconstruct and repair, uh, Campbell and Red Road from US sixty-two one eighty to, uh, New Mexico one twenty-eight. And, uh, this is to go ahead and move forward with the engineering design for that road in, in, in conjunction with that agreement. Um, both us and Lee County right now have this budget for next year's budget to, uh, improve and repair this road. Um, I spoke with, uh, Corte Nino this morning, and they still would like to, uh, move forward with this project, even though they are reviewing their budgets as, as everyone else is. But it is still their intention, and he said this is still our number one project, uh, this is still our number one project to get done.
Mr. Chairman, this is Roberta. Uh, there was just gonna be a slight change in the general ledger under financial impact. Um, this was my mistake. I told Jason this is where it was gonna come out of, this specific fund, but it's actually gonna be coming out of the road fund, out of road construction, out of the road fund. So I just wanted to make note of that, and that was my fault. I did tell Jason it was coming out of this one.
Okay, uh, questions? Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, call for a motion?
Oh, move, Larry Wood?
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty, county execution of release of lien, claim of lien, catch paper.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, several years ago, code enforcement, uh, was forced to clean up this location at forty-five oh-three Single Tree. The owners of that property objected it ti- afterwards and saying, well, you went beyond what you originally said you're gonna clean up. We filed a lien on that property for ten thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Steve and I talked to them, said you pay us ten thousand dollars and we'll release that lien. Well, they have now paid that ten thousand dollars, and I believe I tendered that to Gay, which, who gave it to the treasurer. So, uh, in light of that fact, we need to get that claim of lien released from that piece of property at this point, which requires execution of Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, questions? Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, I look for a motion to approve.
This is Commissioner Henry. I'll make a motion to approve the county execution of release of claim of lien.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Crockett, second.
Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item twenty-one, resolution and agreement consent agenda. All items listed below, okay. Uh, let's see, do we have any items or resolutions, resolutions or agreements that need to be pulled? Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented. Pulling no items. This is Commissioner Crockett.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to item twenty-two. The following items are approved and stamped for approval on April the seventh. Okay, Ken, do we have any items in twenty-two that need to be pulled or discussed, or if not, can I have a motion?
Um, Chairman Carlson, I think these are based on the resolution from the last, uh, meeting we had. Uh, these were provided for, under that resolution, for, um, to continue county business and just use the stamp to approve them because they were routine items and budgeted items. So it's more for information than anything. I don't think we have to, um, vote on-
We don't have to approve that?
No, sir. It, it's covered under the previous resolution.
Okay.
It was just for discussion if there were any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Crockett?
No.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
Okay, moving to twenty-three, department updates.
So there were two or three, um, that would like to, 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 um, have some feedback, and, and so we'll start with those, I think. Ms. Roberta and, uh, um, Ms. Roxanne, probably need to hear from Jason, and, uh, um, Carol had some, had some comments, and Roxanne, so. Ms. Roberta?
I just wanted to introduce, um, our newly hired procurement manager again. Uh, her name is Kristen Novotny. Uh, she originally comes from us, uh, from Germany. Uh, she's a recent college grad of, graduate of Texas A&amp;M. Uh, we're glad to have her on board. She's really, really smart. She's catching on really good, and she's really highly motivated. So we're excited to have her on board, and I hope she's a good asset to the county. So I just wanted to introduce Kristen. Thank you.
Great, welcome.
Commissioners, this is Roxanne, and I wanted to let you know that, uh, HR is, uh, ongoing. Um, we have hired eight people this month. Uh, we have had some increase in applicants that have been applying. Uh, they've been looking for stability. They can't take the up and down of the oil and gas. So we've had a few more applicants, uh, coming in, uh, and applying. Um, that's really all I had to say. We're open. We're here. Uh, give us a call. Um, we're here now.
Okay, any other department updates?
Jason, do you wanna give an update?
Uh, Mr. Commissioner, Jason, hold on.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize. Here. Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a quick report from Public Works. Um, on our road tracker, we currently up to date, we've had eighty, uh, reports. We've completed seventy-three percent of those. In the north, we've had eighteen. We've completed seventy-eight of those. All of them are scheduled and addressed. Um, as Roberta stated earlier, we have several things going on at Public Works right now. Um, in the south, we have London and Carrasco Road, which are currently being prepped, and London is being chipped soon right now, we speak. Uh, Meemire is being reclaimed and prepping for chip seal, which at the same time, uh, they'll be repairing on service. We also have construction at Black River Village and Old Cavern. They are repairing that intersection. And we also have plans out on Dorte Road, and we're hoping to be bringing those to you for award at the next meeting. Uh, in the north, we have, uh, North Twenty-six. We're working through procurement on that, and we'll hopefully be bringing that to you here soon to get underway, uh, in the next couple of weeks. And we also have Hilltop Road, which we paved the intersection, uh, coming off of eighty-two, coming down to the intersection of eighty-five, and then we're getting ready to go do an overlay on the rest of that road, uh, to repair that one. So we have several things going on, you know, at Public Works, and I think we're gonna have all of our, uh, budget extended by the end of the fiscal year.
Great. Any questions? Commissioner Crockett?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, any other department updates?
Mr. Chair- Chairman, this is Josh Mack. I just wanted to let you guys know that we're actively working with all the other agencies in the county and trying to work with the state on the response guidelines, and all the volunteers have been briefed, and we're essentially standing by for CFD and AFD should they have any mass run-ins with patients and need our assistance.
Okay. Any other department updates?
Hi, this is Jen-
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So let's go with, uh, uh, EM, uh, Armaderas, and then Director Stevens.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you guys.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, sir. I just wanted to give the update. Um, we continue to do daily calls with Homeland Security. Uh, those are Monday through Sunday. We have, uh, I'm working with the Artesia General Hospital, uh, Task Force two times a week. We've got the, uh, Agency Working Group one time a week, and then we've got, uh, Recovery one time a week with Homeland Security as well. Um, we have, I just got a big order in yesterday with, uh, a PPE from the National Guard, so we continue to do that, uh, and provide, um, PPE for some of the assisted living facilities and some of the doctor's offices as well. Um, Carlsbad Medical and Artesia General just got two new machines in. They're called the Abbott machines, um, that will allow them to do testing, uh, at the facility and get the results back, uh, within probably five to fifteen minutes. However, the test kits that the state is providing are limited, so we're working on trying to get more of those.
Okay, uh, is this Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jennifer, uh, can, can we publish the protocol for the, for the Carlsbad, uh, Medical Center? I mean, uh-
Protocol on the Abbott machine?
Yeah, yeah, well, the protocol for, for the COVID, uh, how they're addressing the COVID, uh, do, I know that, uh, I, I'm getting a lot of requests from, uh, different citizens throughout the county, especially on, on the social media and stuff about, uh, what is, what is the Carlsbad Hospital's protocols? Uh, evidently, uh, the Artesia General Hospital has published theirs, and everybody's asking me, what is the protocol that, that, uh, the Carlsbad Medical Center has?
So is the question about-
But he does have similar protocols, but I can get with Carlsbad Medical and have, ask them to send that to me.
Okay, if they could publish that, put that out, uh, it would sure cut the calls to me down.
Okay, I can ask for that to be done. I'm not sure how they, how they do the social media, but-
Okay. Uh, if I, questions? Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have anything. I just wanna say thanks to Jennifer again for all of her updates and for working with all of the entities to keep things, um, keep the information from me out.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
Uh, yeah, I just have a, a quick question. Um, with the cases that we're seeing, I, I don't know if you know Jennifer or not, but are they all, like the ten that we have in Eddy County, are they all Eddy County residents, or are they folks coming from outside? I mean, what, what does this look like, I guess?
The ones that are being reported for positive cases in Eddy County did have an Eddy County address listed, um, and they were residing in Eddy County at the time, yes. So anytime you fill out that paperwork and you're gonna get tested, if you put a different address, then it goes to that state, but we would get word of it if they are living here.
But with that number, I guess with that, so if somebody filled something out at, in, let's say El Paso or wherever they're at, and they put off, they're actually Eddy County, even though they're in El Paso, would we get that number, or would it go to El Paso? And how, I don't, I guess, I'm getting a lot of questions on how is it reported? If they're somewhere else, but they live here, but they get tested somewhere else, where does that fall?
Under the, um, the items tested number, they would get it. El Paso would get it, but under the positives, we would get it.
Okay, so just because it hit Eddy County, that does not necessarily mean that patient is in Eddy County. They could be somewhere else, but their home is Eddy County.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
That's a very good question. So, so they could be working Ector County, Texas, but their residence is in, uh, Eddy County, New Mexico, and they could be counted as a Eddy County, uh, positive test?
Yes, sir. The, Eddy County will get notified of the, of the resident that has the, that tested positive.
Okay.
So it all ties back to the address they put on the form when the sample collected?
And get tested positive and be a Eddy County, uh, positive test.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, can I back up and ask one more? I'm sorry, 'cause-
Sure.
Since you asked those questions, I kinda thought of it. So out of the ten positives we have, are they all in the county now that we know of, or have we had any cases? Is there a way to, to know that? Are there any cases that they're not actually, the, the person is not in the county, but they live in the county, or somewhere else, they got tested?
I believe with the exception of one, all the rest, the nine have been in Eddy County, correct?
Okay, all right, so just, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other question for Jennifer.
Okay.
How many of these ten that we have have had to receive care in the hospital?
I'm sorry, how many of the ten are in the hospital?
Yeah, of those ten that we have reported in Eddy County, how many of them have been hospitalized?
That I don't have information on, no. I'm, I believe quite a few of them are quarantined at home. I don't know of any that are still in the hospital.
So from the, from the feedback we get from AGH and CMC, um, there was, the one individual was hospitalized who passed away. Um, the rest have been quarantined at home, and both, um, as of the end of last week, both AGH and CMC reported that they had zero hospitalized, patients hospitalized for COVID-nineteen.
Okay, thank you. That's what I had heard from AGH, that there was no one in the hospital here with COVID-nineteen. And I was just wondering how was countywide. Thank you very much.
That, that is correct.
Great.
The, the data about the, where, where the individuals are located is really, really, really hard to come by. It gets updated very sporadically by zip code. Um, so we get two choices, although they did post a third, which meant one of them, one of those that tested positive had put a PO box down as the residence, 'cause it was eight-eight-two-two-one. Um, so we only get the, the two distinctions whenever that data is compiled, which is pretty irregular at this point. In theory, the state's trying to improve that, but so far, um, it's only been updated once.
Commissioner Carlson, if I may-
Yes.
Out of the ten cases, do we know how many of those ten are recovered?
The last we had was all but, all but one, and they were doing well, other than the, other than the person that passed away. That one didn't go so good.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, next, um, department update.
Well, well, I think, uh, Director Stevens had some comments for department updates.
Brian, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. So, uh, I just wanna inform everybody, the commission, uh, our, our roof recoating work at the fire services has been completed, um, and that team has thus, uh, shifted over to the courthouse and has been on that project for about two weeks. Um, that'll probably run out till late May, early June, uh, before it's completed. Um, in addition to that, I just wanna, um, uh, express some, uh, very well-deserved gratitude to my entire team, um, other than some pre-approved, um, time off, and you'll leave for one employee in a, on a family emergency with another. Uh, my entire team has been showing up every day, ready to work, making sure our buildings are safe, and, uh, for, for the general public and our staff to be working in as well. So those are, those are the things I wanted the commissioners to, to hear from me today.
Okay, great. Any questions? Questions? Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
None.
Commissioner Henry?
None.
Thank you, Brian. Any other department updates? Okay, uh, if no more department updates, then we're gonna move to tribal request consent agenda. There are none, so we're gonna move to twenty-five, emergency business. Do we have any emergency business?
No, Chairman.
Okay, do we have a legislative update? Okay, can we get comments from any legislators or elected officials? Comments from legislators or elected officials? Okay, moving on. Comments from our county manager?
So Commissioners, what you saw today was, uh, on several of the resolutions, after we had had our initial and secondary budget conversations with department heads and elected officials, um, we asked them to move several items out of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget into this current fiscal year to get those monies, to get those, um, that work done and any particular assets purchased as we work to pull back the next fiscal year, uh, budget amounts. And so that was a lot of what you saw there, because we did have some remaining monies in, in those department budgets, and it would be prudent to get that done now. Um, as you heard, uh, Mr. Burns report back, um, the objective is to expend those monies on those roads and get them as, in as good a shape as possible in the remaining months before the end of the fiscal year, um, because of the uncertainty of what the next budget year will look like from a revenue standpoint. So, uh, I, I'd like to thank all of the, the elected officials and department heads for their, uh, willingness to, to review the budget. Initially, I asked them to lean forward, uh, and then I had to go back and ask them to pull it back, so I, I appreciate their understanding. Uh, there was, it was really good discussion, and I think we're, we're close to where we would like to be, um, for our budget proposal, and we'll bring that, um, in the first meeting in May, I believe, is what we're planning on at this point. So, um, I'd also like to thank all the county employees, um, for conducting their business in, uh, in a professional manner as much as possible, given the, the circumstances that we're operating in and the, the, the conditions that we're in. So, um, keep doing what you're doing. Um, don't be, don't be misled by missing- So, keep doing what you're doing, don't be misled by misinformation. Verify and confirm facts before assuming the worst, and we'll continue to work through this. Everybody's doing the right things, everybody's doing the right precautions. The public now seems to have grasped the understanding of how services and business can be conducted with the county at this point, and so, for a time where there's a bit of chaos going on, our operations are as orderly and as consistent as we can make them at this time, and that's a result of the employees doing the things that they have within their control and carrying on. So, thank you very much. If you have any questions, commissioners, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay. Commissioner Crockett, do you have any questions?
I do not, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No questions.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Al, we appreciate it, we appreciate everything you do. Okay, moving to the county commissioners, Commissioner Crockett?
I'll be very brief, I just basically wanna thank all of the county employees and our county manager. He's been really busy in not only dealing with a lot of issues, but dealing with all the commission as well, and I just wanna say thank you, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and I know that this time will pass and we'll be able to have these meetings in person again and see each other. And I just continue to pray for the nation and the county as a whole, and I look forward to approving our resolution tomorrow at the special commission meeting.
Okay, Commissioner McCutcheon?
I'll save my long rant for tomorrow's meeting. So, I'll keep this one pretty short, just, we'd like to appreciate or thank all the county employees, and if you've got some open positions, now's a good time to go, we've talked about that. We'll get everything in good shape when things come back. But, you know, for right now, we appreciate everybody and their frugality and buttoning down the hatches. So, that's all I have, and you will hear a lot more from me tomorrow, and I will be quite as pleasant then, so.
Okay, Commissioner Wood?
No, I don't have anything other than hoping and praying for the land to rest and everything gets back to normal.
Great. Commissioner Henry?
No, I'm like, Commissioner McCutcheon, I'll keep mine fairly short. But I did want to extend my thanks again to Representative Townsend and the sheriff. Obviously, we had an unfortunate incident down here on Sunday with the closing of a business, and I know with the actions of those two gentlemen and many people around the county calling, that gentleman was able to open the business back up. So, I just wanted to publicly again thank Representative Townsend and Mark Cage, the sheriff, for their quick action in working on that and getting that accomplished. And then, much like everyone else, I would extend my thanks. I know it's a very difficult time, I know some folks are scared, but I appreciate y'all getting the work of the county done and continuing to work. So, I sure appreciate it and look forward to tomorrow.
Okay, and I'm kinda like the rest of them, gonna kinda hold my comments and stuff to a minimum today. I just, I do wanna appreciate, say I appreciate everything that we, our county does during this time. It is very trying and unsettling, and, you know, when oil goes to zero dollars, it's very troubling for the economics of our county, and then on top of that, we have the virus. And so, we just gotta have our faith in God and go forward, and so, that's pretty much what I have to say. I would entertain one more motion, though.
Mr. Kevin, I'll make a motion to Slaver Wood to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Commissioner Henry, I'll second.
Okay, call for vote?
Wood? Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Okay, we are adjourned.